My nation, America, in the eyes of what we're looking at just as well.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I do want to just take a moment of personal privilege and recognize someone very special to the Board in the room who has done a terrible thing and gone and retired on us. Mrs. Bev Dwyer is the administrative assistant to Dr. Title, and she is also the Board's administrative assistant as well, and you have been invaluable to us. So, on behalf of the Board, we want to thank you, and we do have a small gift for you. I'm just going to ask you to come to the table because we're trapped back here. I'd come around. Well, thank you. We couldn't do this without you, and that's an understatement. So, that's something pretty and something fun, so enjoy a night out. Thank you.
On a Tuesday?
Yes. Don't come home and watch us on fair TV. Let's see. The first item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 12, 2012, the regular meeting of June 12, 2012, and the regular meeting of June 26, 2012. Moved by, oh, Mr. Lu, it needs to be moved first. Moved by Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Lu.
Thank you. Enclosure number two, page one, two, three.
Ben Chur, can I just ask if we make a friendly amendment before making changes to split these three?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
We'll take each item individually.
Okay.
Which set of, we're on one first. Is there any discussion on the special meeting of June 12, 2012? Seeing none, all in favor. Passes unanimously. Any discussion on the regular meeting of June 12? Mr. Lu.
Thank you. Enclosure number two. One, two, three, four. Page five at the bottom says under B, Mr. Lu commented the two meetings ago, blah, 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 blah. Mr. Lu stated that he looked into some of her questions, and unfortunately, she was given the wrong information. I think it needs to be said that it was the wrong information by Mrs. Fitzpatrick because it wasn't the Board of Education, which I think it implies here is that this student was given the wrong information. So, I would like to have it included.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
Page five, you said?
Yeah. Do you see where I'm talking about?
So, Mr. Lu, you just want to insert the words, Mrs.?
By Mrs. Fitzpatrick after the word "information" was given the wrong information by Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Oh, okay. Sure. Mr. Dwyer, you had a question?
I remember the conversation. What I'm not clear on was whether the student referenced that it was from a specific individual or the staff or where they received the interpretation.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, we can check the records again, but I'm pretty sure that I remember that Mrs. Fitzpatrick answered her question and gave her the wrong information. But either way, I don't mind. We can either postpone it and have someone look at that, or we can change it now.
Can I ask a question? Why is it important to point out where the wrong information came from?
Because I don't think the wrong information was from the Board of Education, and I think it implies that it was. And, you know, as we go through a lot of these things, there's all this talk about, is the Board of Education, is it central office, is this and that? And again, I think clarity of record is always good. That's what, that's how I even remember framing the response that is recorded in these minutes, so.
I'm happy with the sentence the way it is.
Okay. All right. So, are you putting up a motion to add the words "by Mrs. Fitzpatrick"?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second? There's a second. Is there any discussion?
Is there a second?
Mr. Fadabean. Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. Voting in favor, Mr. Lu and Mr. Fadabean. Those opposed? Mrs. Cannelli, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Aikono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. Motion fails. Back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Voting in favor, Mrs. Cannelli, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Aikono, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fadabean, Mr. Carey, and Mrs. Brand. Opposed? Mr. Lu. Thank you, sorry. And any discussion on the regular meeting of June 26, 2012? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry. Any abstentions? Mr. Carey. Sorry. Next up on the agenda is the first read of policy 3431.1, Business Monthly Updates, and I will turn this over to Mrs. Cannelli, the policy chair.
This came up as a topic in our policy meeting of August as we look at the existence currently of both a quarterly report and what was a monthly report, which we suggested be changed to a monthly update. After a lot of discussion, this was the wording that we came up with. We weren't comfortable with the idea of eliminating a monthly report and relying only on quarterly reports in the interest of not being surprised by expenditures or changes or anything with the budget impact. That said, we were also quite comfortable with leaving things up to a degree to the discretion of our CEO, of Dr. Title as superintendent, in terms of what needed to be communicated to us on a monthly basis. And so, after a good bit of discussion and wordsmithing, this was what we came up with as a way of keeping the Board informed, of also relying on the superintendent's discretion with information, and this is still supplemented by the quarterly report, written report that will be given as well, that will be provided to the Board as well. And so, this did pass out of policy with a 3-0 vote, and it comes before you now.
Any discussion? Remember, this isn't a voting item. We'll see it again next month, uh, next meeting. Mrs. Brand.
Through the chair to Mrs. Cannelli. Could you just go through what you folks were thinking of when you said materially as a report? I just wanted to-
No, I'm smiling because our two lawyers had a field day working this out. We had a lengthy debate on adverb choice. The one thing that we were very specific about doing was avoiding a specific number there. That's kind of what started our debate. That would be something very concrete for the superintendent, and yet, remove his judgment call on, well, this might be 2% less than was expected, but we know it's going to, you know, there's going to be a 2%. You know, there's a certain judgment call that putting a number on this budget impact that we ultimately decided we wanted to steer clear of. On the other hand, if you don't put something in front of that word effect, you're opening yourself up for nickel and diming. And so, I don't know if Mr. Fadabean would like to weigh in on the choice of the word materially.
No.
There's a first.
That was a word that, again, several chosen, and that was the final one that we felt was, worked best.
Did I understand you to say that we will still be receiving the quarterly written report?
Yes.
And I'm comfortable with this.
So, again, the idea of this was that this was also, in its initial wording, a written expenditure report, which we didn't feel something, because there will be a month that that's not necessary. It involves personnel in a manner that isn't, again, necessarily appropriate or needed. But that said, the Board doesn't like the idea of being surprised either. So, we didn't like the idea of eliminating it either.
This helps streamline things, but still keeps us informed.
That's right.
Okay.
Is the risk of being repetitive, materially meaning substantiative? Which, but I guess what you're saying is whether or not it's significant or not.
Right.
And we're leaving the significant part up to the discretion of the superintendent.
That's correct.
Okay. I know that sounds funny, but I wanted that at least said so that we're all have a similar appreciation for it. All right, thanks.
Any other discussion? Excellent. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary discussion of the 2013-2014 budget. I will leave this to Dr. Title to kick off. I will remind the Board that this is an item that came out of our handbook discussion and just remind you that it is the superintendent's budget before it comes to us. We can offer some suggestions, but it doesn't necessarily mean it will become part of the budget. That role is ours when it comes to us, when it's finalized and sent to us by the superintendent.
Right. So, the reason it's here is because the Board had an interest in kind of weighing in before we even ramp up on the budget, and we'll be ramping up on the budget fairly soon. In fact, Doreen is probably ramping up on it right now in the audience. So, it's very preliminary because we don't know exactly what all the drivers on the budget will be, and often that determines what can get in or can't get into the budget. We do have, we know we have a settlement of our two largest employee contracts in the two, average around a 2% range, so we know what that figure is going to be. We have unsettled contracts with some of the non-certified, so that's a bit of an unknown at this point. Couple other things that are definitely going to impact this budget, but we won't know the full extent of it until we really get into it, and that is, well, the two big nuts are pension and health insurance. If you followed the pension discussion last spring, as we went through our budget and as the town completed that experience study of the pension, which in this past budget worked in our favor, if you recall that whole thing, it's all coming back to you now, there was a large spike in the pension contribution on the Town Board of Ed for the '13-'14 year, according to the projections that were handed out at that time. If that comes to be, that's got, that could have a major material, significant and substantial effect on the budget. We don't exactly have that translated, and that's always subject to being updated by the actuaries, but the way that chart read there, I think we're going to have a pretty significant cost for pension in '13-'14, which could be a percentage point or more in dollars in this budget. And the other one is health insurance. It's too early to tell on that. We don't have the projection yet on that. You know that about the last three or four months of the fiscal year, right around the time we were doing our budget, there were some spikes in usage. Usually, that translates into needing to put more money into the fund, so I would guess that that is going to need some additional funding by the Board. And those are three big, big pieces to the budget. Put that on the fact that, you know, this year, we came in with a budget that was under 3%. It was well received, but, you know, it didn't make it through completely intact. So, I see the fixed costs in this budget, the salaries, the pension, the health insurance, gobbling up, you know, quite a bit of room that we have here. We will still need to add some teachers at the high school level as enrollment continues to rise there, at both high schools. I can see that being in there. And the other big unknown out there, and until Doreen recently did the calculation on it, I didn't realize how much this could impact us, but if you haven't followed what's happening with the federal budget, they have a term that is now being bandied about for what's going to happen on January 1st if Congress does not come to a budget agreement, and it's called sequestration. Go Google that one and see how much fun it comes up. Sequestration means that, if you recall, a year ago, the federal government had an impasse on the budget, and the country was on the verge of a lot of difficulty, and the solution to that was to set up this supercommittee to come up with ways to cut the budget. Does all this ring a bell? The supercommittee could not agree, and the way they got the budget through was to say, if there's no agreement by Congress on what to do with the federal budget, then automatic cuts go into effect. That's sequestration. Automatic, across-the-board cuts to all discretionary spending. Discretionary means education as well as other things. It also impacts the military and a host of others, and it's about, in the vicinity of about 10%, which means that if that were to happen, our federal funds would drop by, I'm just giving approximation, $200,000. So, it's a non-trivial sum. So, if that happens, then obviously, that's a $200,000 funding cliff that we would be dealing with for the coming years. So, that's all my good news about the budget. You know, obviously, we're going to work very hard to, you know, do everything we can to improve things, but I just wanted to sort of give you the lay of the land that I think this is one of the years where some of these cost drivers that are a bit out of our control, maybe higher than people like, and our ability to put back in some discretionary items may have to hold off for a year, because if you look at the pension calculation, there's a huge spike in one year, and then it levels off. So, once we make it through this upcoming year with pension, we should be fine from here on out, but right now, we're looking at a pretty sizable increase. But anyway, that's my overview, and probably more than you wanted to know.
Anybody have any commentary? Mrs. Brand?
It overlaps, but we clearly have it on the agenda about Osborne Hill Elementary School, but are we also, when we're looking at our upcoming budget, including any potential impact for remediation that would be required elsewhere?
That's a good question. I think that most of the costs for remediation at Osborne that could fall into the '13-'14 year are likely to fall into the capital side of things, not the operating side of things. So, for example, if we're talking about what's the game plan over there to complete the work, we know, for example, the windows, that was a project the Board approved, and replacing the windows will solve, you know, a big chunk of the problem. So, that's in the capital. What we have to do is look at what our options are for the rest of the building, including the gym. And so, it's quite possible that, you know, we may need to do significant work in the gym. If we do, that could very well roll into the capital side of things. I don't know if it will yet, whether it would in the operating side. Right now, I'm tending to think it's probably going to end up on the capital funding request that we take to the Town sometime during this fiscal year.
I think at one point, it was a meeting actually that the Chair attended with the First Selectmen and also the Chair of the Board of Finance, but whether or not there was potential to anticipate a need for further testing in any other sites as well. So, I'm just not sure where we are in that and if that has to be included. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not sure either on that. That's, I mean, that's an unknown. Yep.
Anybody else? Mr. Lu?
So, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Title, in terms of the forecast looking bleak, but I still want to try to see if we can find a way to reexamine world language. I think it's important. I know, I think there are many, many parents who believe it's important, and I would impress upon you if you could look at our budget to see if there's a way to make that come back, if not all at once, maybe partially. I guess the 2013-14 year grandfathering will be over. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I guess my question would be, is how much will we be saving then from not having grandfathering?
Yeah, we'll pick up about $350,000 in savings from the extra transportation we've been providing, but, and I'm glad you brought this out because there's another big unknown, and that's the bus contract.
Yeah.
That's out to bid, which is coming back, another project for Doreen and Tom. And it depends on how that comes in. Could be that if the bus contract is favorable, then we could realize those savings that you're referencing, or it could be that those get gobbled up because bus companies are, you know, maybe bidding higher than we're currently paying. So, whether that, we will realize the savings either way, but my fear is that the bus contract bid may end up eating some of that.
Okay. And, but would you also take a look at the after-school buses? I think it's something that's very helpful to some of our students who have programs after school, and I think they're important to the overall learning of and well-being of our students. My last question is, it says preliminary discussion. Mrs. Aikono, that means that this is the one and only one, or will we have more?
No, the next time we do this is when we get the superintendent's budget.
I would just like to say that I'm happy that we are finally back to this again, something we've always been doing, including the Board of Education, but, you know, one of the things I think is so difficult is that when we have to then take something that you've been working so difficult, you know, I understand how complex and difficult a budget is, that when you've got it all locked into place and then we say to you, I'm not so sure about this and that, it's very difficult to unwind, and it's very possible that maybe we should get a little bit of a heads-up of where you may be going so that you can test the water and we can test back in order to have a more smooth transition, a harmonious transition into getting what the consensus needs to be for a Board of Education to go forward and make the best of it. So, that's, I would like to see a couple more of these discussions as we get into the year, and I would love to hear more about your thoughts on the budget, given some of the hurdles that you think you're facing as they become more concrete.
Anybody else? Mrs. Brand?
Because we may not be discussing it, I would like to have another discussion because we may have a better sense of where some of our issues are further down the line, but also, I had said it before, I really still would love to see our world language back in the high school, after-school buses. I agree. I think they're both something that I think is at great value. We obviously will be weighing them, but I think it only fair that, you know, if I have that as an interest, certainly as a Board member, just make you aware. It doesn't, it isn't, you know, an order, but I just, you know, want you to know at least from my perspective what some of my priorities are. Thanks.
Mr. Fadabean?
I believe Dr. Title mentioned that the high school enrollment is up and the need for maybe having some additional teachers at the high school. I guess my question relates to whether or not, is it possible that there could be some reassignment of teachers because of constant enrollment, or is enrollment still increasing whereby you'd have to have new hires rather than reassignments? In other words, is enrollments, do we know yet whether or not enrollment is still increasing overall, or whether enrollment at the lower grades is staying constant or diminishing and the high school and middle schools are increasing? In other words, can we reassign resources rather than acquiring new resources?
Well, we have, we do that. I mean, that's a, we did it this past year. We do anticipate, and we don't know the numbers right now, and, you know, we'll get them on the first day and then they're official October 1st, but we know that generally speaking, elementary enrollment has been projected to decline. And in this budget that we're in right now, we did reduce the number of elementary teaching positions in the budget, and we did increase them at the, at the high school level. It wasn't a perfect offset, but where we need fewer teachers, we budget for fewer teachers, and where we need more teachers, that's where we try to do it. So, we do make those shifts, I guess is what I'm saying, and so, it's possible that some of the increase at the high school could be offset by some reductions at the elementary level, but it usually doesn't offset it exactly. We get surprised all the time at some of the enrollment that we, kids pop in at different grades that we weren't expecting, and so, we always will adjust based on our best enrollment information. So, it's, you know, we could have some offset there.
Anybody else? Mr. Dwyer?
On the health insurance, just three letters, M-O-U. Is that an issue that you think you've developed a working relationship with the First Selectmen, and so therefore, that documentation is not all that important because you'll just work it out, or whether you think that that is something that's important to have done prior to the budget sessions?
You know, my opinion on that is I think it's a moot point.
Okay.
I really do.
No, no, that's it?
I don't, I don't see a need to bring that back up again.
Second question, this year, you-
Sorry.
No, no, I accept that answer. Second question is, this year, you absorbed the increased high school students within existing space, reallocated and all that stuff. Are you assuming that that is going to be able to be done a second year?
Are you talking about the space needs-
Yeah, the space needs.
At the high school?
Or eventually, we're going to run into a problem.
We, yeah, no, you're right. I think it's a capital budget item. It's actually a capital budget item this Board voted on. Board voted to send a letter to the First Selectmen for the purposes of a building committee to expand Ludlow High School. That's still pending, and it's a discussion that we're having. I don't see that impacting necessarily the operating budget for '13-'14. I see that being a capital budget item that we need to, you know, we need to press that point because the enrollment will continue to rise, and the situation is particularly acute at Ludlow. It's a problem at Ward, but it's more of a problem at Ludlow. So, I don't see it being an operating budget issue though, at this point.
Just the third comment is that, that last year, we clearly, you clearly said and we accepted that every decision is a question of priorities, and that of the 1.8 million that was cut on about a two, three-week discussion period, that if you had more time, perhaps we could have been more creative, and then if we can take a year evaluating the impact of those cuts, and I think I would be interested in saying, what would be the alternative if we wanted to increase the library hours or wanted to do something with world language or we wanted to do something with after-school buses? What are the alternatives? And, you know, don't say that we'll have to eliminate all lunches. You know, I mean, that there are some, are there some viable alternatives that if the Board felt strongly, a majority of the Board felt strongly, that one of those three things ought to be a priority because for the next 50 years, we're going to have a superintendent saying, hey, it's a tough economy. You know, I don't think we're going to get back to where things arose, so at some point, I don't think we can use that as an excuse. We just have to say, we've looked at the alternatives and, no, as a Board, we're not going to keep asking you the same question every year.
Just so you know, it was 2.8 million dollars, not 1.8.
Correct, 2.8.
And every one of those 2.8 million dollars represents a cut that hurt somewhere, and all of the people who felt hurt by those cuts would love to see the 2.8 million dollars restored because it was a wide range of cuts. So, clearly, you know, if we get to, you know, the budget season, there's, you know, several choices, and this goes for anything that's either in or not in the budget that we, that we bring out. You can simply add it to the budget, and the budget goes up from what I present. That's always the Board's choice. The second thing is, and that happens, by the way, this wouldn't be the first place. The second thing would be for the Board to say, you know, it's not in there, bring us alternatives, and, you know, talk about the alternatives. And the third is to say, well, you know, this is not the year for it, but we don't want to lose track of it and see what you could do next year, so. So, now, there's always opportunities with it, but there are, you know, a lot of people who have commented on a lot of those different cuts. And so I'd just point that out, that it was more wide-ranging than just one or two items. But sure, alternatives can always be provided.
Mr. Camortito.
I apologize for being late, first of all. I guess through the chair to Dr. Tittle, is there anything, and I know we've had some discussions in policy meetings and so forth, that hamper you from making some of those decisions or switching around certain ways that the budget runs?
Is there any, I don't understand the question.
Well, one of the discussions we've had is the issue with building usage by outside parties and things like that. Other than that issue in which outside parties are using it and those funds to run the building in those hours, is coming out of the educational budget, are there any other issues, you know, policy-wise that handcuff you from making decisions budgetarily?
I'm still, I don't think I'm still following the job. I don't think there's anything that handcuffs us making decisions. I think that it's often a matter of choices among competing priorities, and, you know, if you want to add something in, no matter what it is, then either you have to increase the budget that you're proposing, or you have to cut something out. And so it's a matter of judgment and priorities. I don't think there's anything in the board's policy that precludes that from happening, unless I'm not understanding the question.
Well, like the policy with building usage, okay?
Right.
In which we don't charge people to use the building, but there is a cost to-
Right.
-district for that. I mean, I mean, that 300 or 400, or whatever it is, okay, half a million dollars gets taken away from programming so that we can keep the buildings open on weekends for, you know, rec basketball. Other than that ish, I mean, and that's in policy, so that money comes directly out of our budget.
I don't think it's a policy. I think that it's, it's a, that were we to collect from those entities, that money would go to the town. I'm not sure that's a policy as much as it is a understanding or a practice that has been followed here. In other words, that the money we get from the use of facilities to cover custodial overtime, we get to keep. Anything above and beyond that insurance of a rental cost gets turned over to the town. Were that to change-
Okay.
You know, I don't believe it's a policy change. I think it would be, you know, an understanding with the town that were we to charge entities for the use, that the money would stay with the Board of Ed. You know, that, that's what you're getting at. I don't think it's a policy issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's an understanding or a historical way, the town does carry a budget, a revenue item for that in theirs, so they would have to remove it, and we would, we would have it.
Okay.
That's kind of how it would play out. Yeah. I think I get it now.
Okay.
Anybody else? Great, I just want to, oh, I'm sorry.
I guess this is sort of a general question, and then your impression or feeling. We've had a difficult budget for a number of years now, and one of the ways one can get money out of a budget, other than cutting program, is to try and seek out and look for more efficiencies. Do you think, in essence, the well is running dry in the ability to eke out more efficiencies as a lot of these items have been looked at, reviewed, efforts have made to do certain things to create more efficiency, that there, those areas may not be as fruitful as they were in the past?
Same with the fruit part. I think we've plucked a lot of the low-hanging fruit in those areas. I think there's still always efficiencies we're looking for. I don't think the well is completely dry. We're always looking for ways to operate more efficiently. But, you know, do we see another, start the high schools 20 minutes early and save a half a million dollar kind of fruit? I don't see that on the horizon. I think it's, I think it's on a much smaller scale, but we still want to try to do that. You know, we're always looking for, you know, energy efficiency, we're looking for, you know, to economize wherever we can in the areas that don't directly impact, you know, kids. But that can only take you so far. You know, we're basically a labor-intensive business. 75% of our budget is salary and benefits, and then a whole lot else we can't do much with. So I think the window on that has narrowed, but I don't believe it's completely closed.
Anybody else? Moving on to our next item is the Osborne Hill Elementary School update.
Well, I think you've been getting apprised of the progress here on a weekly basis as the Osborne Hill community has. This has been an incredibly thorny issue, starting in mid to late July, when the testing results started to come in, particularly in the gym. We started sending out every Friday a letter to the Osborne Hill community, starting July 27th, every Friday, about where we, where we are with this. You know, I think you've seen all those. We had a very well-attended informational forum on August 15th that's still available for the public to view on Fair TV on demand, in case anybody wasn't able to make it. Mr. Cohen did an excellent job of securing a lot of expertise to be in the room. EPA was there, DEEP was there, State Department of Public Health, local public health, medical advisor, and we had, you know, all the heavyweights there to give the best information possible, the testing company. And we worked very hard, the whole staff in the central office, plus Mr. Arnone, to plan for, you know, the kind of worst-case scenario, which is, what do we do if we can't open the school? Fortunately, enough of the strategies that the EPA and the consultants came up with enabled us to get the building cleared by Department of Public Health, both the state and local, with the support of DEEP, with the support of the EPA, to be able to operate, you know, a large portion of that building. And so fortunately, we don't have to enact the contingency plan, which consumed us for quite a bit of the summer. We are continuing our work there. The work is not done. Test results, we posted some yesterday, we'll be posting some more tomorrow. I will be sending another update to the Osborne Hill community with some frequently asked questions tomorrow, which obviously you'll all get a copy of. The situation improves every passing day, but we're still not in a position to occupy the entire facility. And I always want to thank the central office team. Many people worked well above and beyond the call of duty, canceled vacations, work weekends, nights, everything. Mr. Arnone, not just Tom Cohen, but Sal Morabito, and Dave Friar, and Bob LaRocque, and the whole crew, to, to get us to the point where we did everything humanly possible to be able to get into that building. And I've been in it, I was in it yesterday for a while with the teachers, I was in it today. The good news is, the building's never looked better. It got an unscheduled paint job. It's sparkling, but teachers are incredibly excited. They are so excited to be in their own building and not in the alternative sites that we had. You know, we have a couple people in places that we think we can move them out of fairly soon, but I think the, you know, getting that clearance from the public health was, you know, was the trigger there. You know, they looked at what we had, they looked at the data, and they gave it the okay. But teachers are all working like beavers now to get the thing ready. Somebody's bound to ask this, so I'll just say right now, we don't know what the total costs of this are. Right now, we're absorbing it in the operating budget. Our philosophy on this is, we had to do everything humanly possible to do whatever we could do and spare no expense to get that school open. That was the priority, you know, and meet the requirements, the health requirements. And, you know, we're still continuing our work there, so all this testing and remediation costs money. And so, right now, we've expended about $108,000 on this. We have another set of purchase orders out to different contractors, who, by the way, went well above and beyond the call of duty, and we had contractors in the summer working Saturdays and Sundays. You got something. Another $100,000 where the purchase orders are out there. We don't know if we'll use all of that, some of that, more than that. This is a moving target. Some of the work has been done, but the bills are not in. The town purchasing department worked very well with us on their emergency, you know, the purchasing guidelines, very helpful with that. And, you know, at this point, the other costs that we don't know about, so we still have ongoing costs. We don't know where the final number is going to be. We need to secure a temporary facility for the physical education classes. Right now, physical education will be held outside, weather permitting. Weather doesn't permit, it has to be in the APR, and then lunches in the classroom. That's not a solution we want to live with for very long. So we're investigating the equivalent of a gym portable, or something equivalent to that, so that the kids can have the regular physical education program. That cost is not figured into the numbers I've given you. That looks like it's in the range of $75,000 to $90,000 for the year. Because I would anticipate we will not have the use of that gym for the year, but that's going to require a capital cleanup. So when all is said and done, this is an example of the draft policy. This is an expenditure that could materially impact our budget. And, you know, it's so early in the fiscal year, it's hard to say. You know, we're just starting out in the fiscal year. Right now, our focus is on restoring, you know, and getting the full clearance in that building. But those, that's the range of numbers. The Board of Finance would like me to come next Tuesday and give them a, you know, if I have more specific information next Tuesday for Board of Finance, obviously I'll share it with you. But just to give you an idea of the scale of the numbers with this thing. And so I'm really pleased that we're able to get the clearances from all the agencies and get in there. It's not a perfect situation. It is much less imperfect than the alternatives. And this was not a, this was not an easy lift. I would say that. This was, this is venturing into a lot of unknown territory for all of us. But I'm excited that when the kids come to Osborne on Thursday, that, you know, it'll be as close to normal as it can be, and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be good to go. So that's my update. And if I can answer questions, I'd be happy to.
Mr. La.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tittle. What kind of, I'm really glad to hear that we have, that you're not finished and that we're not finished, and it is, and I don't mean that because I want this to continue on, but because we know that this, it takes a long time to get the, the kind of continual testing to know that we're in a safe space. So I guess what I question is, what is the ongoing remediation and testing and cleaning plan you have in place?
Actually, that's something that our consultants, environmental consultants, AMC Environmental, they've filed a plan with the EPA, which does, as I put in one of the letters to the parents, we will be required to do periodic testing of the building. Kind of, it'll be like a rotating thing, like, you know, in the winter you do this quarter, and then two months later do another quarter of the school, so that by the end of the year, there'll sort of be a full round again. And it's a fairly detailed plan. They also, they have to file for sort of that part of it, the periodic testing, and they have to file sort of, what's the long-term plan, that might involve capital expenditures. And so that's the overview of it. Now we have to get comments back from the EPA on that before we can proceed with it. That's kind of part of the, at the holdup on all this, but that's part of what happens here is, you know, we have to check with the EPA, and then they have to approve it, then we go implement it. But it will be periodic testing, and if necessary, further work on the school throughout the year.
So as soon as we get that approval from the EPA, can we have that posted on the website?
Sure.
Okay, great. Another question is the Library Media Center. How do we intend to use or not use that space?
Well, right now, it's not, it's within the containment zone, so it's off, off limits. We are continuing to work with our consultants, and continuing to make efforts within that Library Media Center to bring the levels down to the levels for occupancy. We're hoping to do that as rapidly as possible. And so as soon as we can get that down to the, you know, under the 300 level, we'll open it. That's not anything near like the gym situation.
Right.
All right?
But it's still high?
Yeah, it's high, but it's not nearly in the gym world. That space actually, that's a perplexing one. Of course, the whole issue's perplexing. That Library Media Center tested clean when we first started this, okay? While the gym was still open, before we'd even closed off the gym. But something happened. We went in and we cleaned some duck work in there, or something got stirred up, and it got high. So we know it's not a, you know, a continuing problem there. It's not like the gym where you have the fireproofing and that whole thing. We're still trying to figure that out with the consultants, but we don't see that as a long-term issue. So we think we're going to be able to return that to service fairly soon, but I'll tell you, I am not, I'm not going to be, this is a predicting with this.
Yeah.
You know, because the consultants will say, you know, do this, we think this will work. We say, okay, we'll authorize that. They do it, and then, you know, it works, but it doesn't work enough, and we have to go to another plan. So I think the library will be returning to service in the not-too-distant future. It's not nearly like, like the gym.
So before you opened the doors fully on the Library Media Center, are all the books and everything staying inside there?
Correct. And the books were all tested, and they're clean, and they've been covered, so before we opened it up, we'd actually, you know, go back and double-check that.
They're not going to come out?
No.
Nothing's coming out of there until the whole place is signed off?
Nothing is coming out of there right now.
Okay.
Yep.
I think one of the things that scares me is how the dust, from what I understand from the EPA, is when you clean it, it moves around in the air. A lot of it comes off the surface you're trying to get, and you test it, and it looks clean. But like when you're cleaning your house, that dust settles again the next day, and suddenly you've got a high reading. I guess that leads me to my next question is, some of the areas that are high, that are hallways, or like the Library Media Center, or even the gym, are, how do we know that in any kind of work that needs to be done, that these PCBs that are in the higher areas are not going to escape or come out? I mean, I don't know how and when this work is going to get done. I would imagine, obviously, it's not during school hours. So if it's done off-school hours, how do we then clean the hallways again so that any residue, if this is how it's done? I don't know.
Now you're into a technical thing, so I'm going to defer to Tom on this.
What?
It's, it's, it's all sealed off, so.
How?
I'm going to go to a microphone. Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now expended my knowledge of how they do the cleaning.
Hello. Doesn't work that way. The way they did the library, when they do a specialized cleaning, there's a containment built inside the room. So literally, the men go in there, they set up a containment to get inside of, get gowned up, and then they cover with plastic. Like if they were doing this room, they would cover the ceiling with plastic, they would cover all the books with plastic, all the walls, all the floor. They actually built a containment inside the room. Then they go up and they work on the duck work, they bring it down into that containment, they clean it, they do what they have to it, put it back up, and then they do testing. Then when that clears, or whatever readings they get, they tear that containment all down within itself and take that out to a dumpster.
That's interesting. Now, what about duck work?
Well, the issue with the duck work in the library is, it had sound-deadening insulation inside the duck. So when they opened it up to clean it, there were insulation boards lining the inside of the duck. It was done years ago. It helps to keep the sound down with large pieces of duck work and equipment, and it helps. But it's old, it can start to break down. We found out from the EPA that sometimes that can have PCBs in it. We're testing that, but that was all removed, all brought down into containment, everything all rolled up into the plastic and taken out.
So that, whatever other duck work that needs to be done won't spread to other ducks- ducks?
Correct.
Okay.
Then when they work in other areas, when they do work in other areas, they're required to have what's called a negative pressure air machine. They're really huge blowers that constantly suck air out of the spaces, so that nothing can force its way back into clean areas.
Great, thank you. I just have one last thing, you know, I think, thank you for the hard work you're doing. I know this is a new, this is our asbestos, I guess, of today, and it's, and some of it is uncharted territory. What concerns me is, we went into a school looking for possible PCBs and caulking for windows, and we found it everywhere else, and what concerns me is, could this, and I know I hate to say it, because I know we're worried about budget, but we're also worried about our kids, could this be a possibility in other schools? I know we're gonna get to that, but what I would like to possibly recommend, and I'll let you sit on this a little bit, but I think it might be a really good idea, is for us to have a committee that has parents, teachers, administrators, town citizens and officials on it, to make sure that we're following up correctly on how this testing is getting done, to make sure to see it through, and to then start to dive into if there's a possibility we need to go other places in the district.
Mrs. Brand?
As I understood what the reports were saying, the fire retardant that was sprayed on the roof was considered a source, have we identified other sources that we know within that site that might help guide us moving forward? I mean, you know, if you know what's causing it, it's a lot easier to fix it.
Yeah, Tom, why don't you try that?
Sorry. Had I known, I apologize.
You might as well stay up there, because you know more about this than I do.
One of the things, as we were working on Osborne Hill, is we were able to narrow it down to the 1968 addition that was done there, which was the gymnasium, a classroom addition in the west wing, we believe the stone floor in the lobby, it was all done together. Because as we started to take our bulk samples and really dig deep into it, is where we found the fireproof spray-on to have PCB in it, the actual roof deck on the gym did, the paint on the walls, polyurethane on the wood floor. And then because of all that being in there, anything in a foam material sucks in the PCB in the air. So, there's a foam mat that's under the wood floor in the gym, that was found to be positive, and the gym mats in the gym. So that's what prompted us to start shutting down the gym. We talked with the United States EPA, and they said try isolating the gym, the gym has its own HVAC system, we shut that down, and that's when we started to get better readings in the school. So we realized that everything was coming from the gym, excuse me. So we're able to narrow down that that was a 1968 addition, we did briefly work internally in our department to see where other 1968 work was done in the district. Sal Morbeto actually went around and popped his head above some of the gyms in all the schools, the only school that even came close to having any fireproof spray-on was Dwight. It's a little bit different material, it's a more hard-coded material, but it's the only other gym in the district that has some fireproof spray-on. Normally, fireproof spray-on is done when you don't have sprinklers, a lot of our schools don't have sprinklers, so they protected the steel of the deck of some of these large rooms, but generally that was how much research we've done so far. But we'll probably get an architect involved, an environmental consultant, and start looking at some of these areas, but I think we can narrow it down to really maybe one or two schools that we'll have to go look at. So there's not a worry that all 17 locations could be a problem. But that's the research you do, what you do when you go in to look at these is you're trying to build a history in the building of what's going on, and certainly we were only looking for contaminated caulk, glazing on windows, and these are the kinds of things you find, the state was just as surprised as we were. So I hope that helps.
I have a follow-up to that, you mentioned the environmental consultant, are we going to hire an outside consultant to help us with what we need to do going forward with the district?
Yes.
Okay, we are, good, excellent, I think that's a great idea, this is something that is consuming all of your time, rightfully so, because it's a health issue that we're concerned about, but there are other things that we need to do in the district, and this requires, I think, a lot of attention that one person can't be dedicated to, and we're not experts in PCBs, so.
We're getting there.
So I think, I think that's an excellent idea, somebody that can come on and advise us, work with the EPA and give us advice and.
Yeah, we have to, because we have to build a plan that's accepted by the federal government and the state, of what we're gonna do with this building. They don't care if we're gonna remove the windows or not, they wanna know now that we found it, what's our long-term plan.
And this person will help us look at our other buildings as well?
Correct.
Excellent, and do you have them on board now, or you're in the process of doing?
Not yet, we're in the process of interviewing and talking to them, to get the right team together.
And he's gonna help you build your history and figure out what you can eliminate and all of that?
Future projects we're gonna run into and everything.
Excellent, and that's somebody that then, when we have to go for funding in front of town bodies, he can come with us?
Will be a good speaker in one of the town bodies, correct.
He or she can speak and.
Is she?
And answer, yes, can answer questions.
Definitely.
Talk about the technicalities, the cost, those types of things. Okay. Sure.
So, when would be, how often would we be testing, following up, I mean, how, when would?
At Osborne Hill?
Yeah.
The operation and maintenance plan is done by fiscal years, so the government, federal government, state wanna know what you're gonna do that first year that it's occupied, to make sure every space is tested. And what they do is, they think quarterly, you should take a chunk of the building and send it out for testing. So that's what the plan's gonna be. Right now, it's a preliminary plan, because they knew we were moving in and accepted a short plan, they want by Christmas time, December, to have a more detailed plan, but it will be quarterly, we'll probably go in and do sections of the building.
So, the next time we test would be somewhere in December?
I'm thinking in the winter.
So we wouldn't test again, like next week after the kids have been in, to make sure that we're?
Well, right now, we're still doing a lot of testing, we're doing testing in the areas that are slightly elevated, that we're cleaning, and continually testing till we can open every space in the building except the gym. But people are asking, I think the parents are asking, when are we gonna test the cleared clean areas?
Okay.
That's part of the operation plan, and that's be quarterly.
All right, so then I guess the question is, I'm sorry if I was confused by that, but the question is, on the areas that aren't, that are still high, how often do you test?
The areas that we have slightly high reading?
Yeah.
They're testing sometimes every three days.
Okay.
It takes, it depends on what we have to do, if we're cleaning duck work, we know how long that takes, you have to let things sit 24 hours, then you test, if we're cleaning the room, there's standards for that.
I think it's really important that we get those as posted also as soon as possible, I know there's a lot of parents who are concerned, and I think, I think we are doing, you know, a good job, but in order to keep everybody feeling like we're all in this together, that we need to get those posted, so that's great to hear, though, that we're doing that every three days.
I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to everyone who's been involved in this entire process, you guys have gone above and beyond, and I know turned your lives upside down to make all of this happen. I wanna thank Jeff Steele for volunteering his time to moderate the debate that you guys, the forum that you all put together, which I think was huge and so important and so useful and helpful to parents. I've gotten a lot of really good feedback from people, you know, since we did put that together and offered them the opportunity to learn from the experts. I just wanted to point out on the record some things that you hear at the grocery store, it was not the Board of Education's decision to open that building, we got the clearance from the federal agencies and the state departments to open the building, we did not make that decision, it was not a rushed decision, we never called a meeting, we never voted on opening the building, we waited to hear from the officials on this, and that's why and how the building opened. I think that's an important message that has gotten lost, and I want people to understand that. There was certainly no rush to do anything, if we thought we needed to be in another building, as difficult as it would have been, we would be. I think that's important to get out there. And also, just as a layman, it's sometimes hard to read those reports that do come out, and I know that you post them as soon as you get them, we get verbal results, so we know what's going on, but we can't post anything till we get it in writing, which is the cause of the delay, and I know people get antsy saying, how come you know numbers but you didn't post them? It's just that we don't have them in writing to put on the website. I just wanted to maybe throw out a suggestion, once school starts and once the next written report is put together, that maybe Sands Cleary and, you know, Mr. Cullen, and maybe if our environmental people are available, they could go to a PTA meeting and answer questions about the report.
Sure.
Because I know there's still people that have some lingering questions, I think that would be helpful for the Osborne Hill community, so I'll throw that out there as an idea. But thank you, overall.
Mr. Conbertito, then Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Carey.
Yeah, first of all, I just, I wanna thank the administration and District Office for all the work they've done. I had an opportunity actually to tour the building today, Mr. Aronowne. The building looks great, there's nothing intimidating about the way they've sealed off the gym and the media center, if you had never been in the building before, you actually wouldn't know that those rooms exist. One thing, and I did get clarification from Mr., from the principal today, but just like Mr. Cullen to confirm it, because I did get a number of phone calls and emails about a big dumpster outside with a big sign on front talking about PCB contamination, my understanding is that dumpster was used to dispose of those containment facilities you were just talking about in the cleaning process?
Correct, they're required to to have the signs, there's nothing we can do about the caution signs and containment stuff, they're required.
So I just want the public to know that that's what those were for.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Dwyer, then Mr. Carey.
There's a lot of staff focus on welcoming the new students back to a school year, and yet I suspect that there will be parents who, despite all the communication, will also want to ask questions on this issue. Is there any additional staffing planned for the opening day of the school, so that teachers and principals and others aren't distracted from the children, and yet the parents are able to get whatever information they need? So is there any additional staffing planned for that opening day?
Uh, no, not at this point, but we can.
This is a rhetorical question to our team, so you don't have to answer it, okay? But, the common sense question that I have is, if the PCB problem at Osborne Hill is so problematic that the EPA wouldn't let us go into the building, why isn't the EPA require us to check every school? Or conversely, if it's not such a big deal that we have to check every school, why are we spending $300,000 at Osborne Hill? And, I'm not certain anyone sitting here at this table can answer that question, including our team who's been ensconced in this. So I do wanna reiterate what I think Mrs. Iacona was saying and emphasize it further, as much as I do want our community to be part of this discussion, I think we need to rapidly hire a subject matter expert that can look at all of what we have here and help us to understand this in layman's terms, so we can render good judgment on this. We have to look at our other buildings, if we do, we need to understand how and why, and what the potential problems are. I think it's great that we had the experts in, but the experts are telling us, on the one hand, this is a really big problem, we can't open the school, on the other hand, it's not a big deal enough to look at other schools. And then we're kinda caught in this, in this middle space. So, I really would like to get someone, I think, who's independent of who's, we're paying to test, who is a recognized expert, who can help communicate this to our community, the other town bodies, our parents, and our board, to make sure that we are approaching this prudently. That being said, the other question I had, question, questions I had, were a little more related to the process back and forth. I just wanna understand, and this is something I've heard, so I wanna substantiate it, the fire retardant that is the potential subject of this issue at the gymnasium in Osborne Hill, that was potentially a code requirement, because we weren't putting sprinklers in at that time? In 1968, when we built it?
Yeah, that's what I would say.
So that would be a state-level code requirement?
I don't know if that was local or state or both, but it was a requirement for that structure, so when the gym was built, it was required to have fireproof spray-on for the large structural members.
Okay. So, not to get on my government intruding on your live stump, but if we're required to put this substance, and it seems like asbestos or every other fireproof substance that we seem to come across in the last 50, 60 years, doesn't end up well for people's personal health, I would ask that we reiterate and research that with our state delegation, because if we're required to put this substance that is gonna cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to remediate, I'm hopeful the state can see its way to help us fix the problem if they help us create it. So that would be one, one thing I'd ask. And potentially, we could talk to some of our delegates about that. The other thing is, is that the sense I'm getting is, is it true this is only about a three-year-old law?
Tom?
In terms of testing for PCBs, has this only been in place for about, required for about three or, two or three?
No, we originally received a letter from the federal government, I wanna say in 2007, related to electronic timepiece equipment in the schools. They are electronics, so they had PCB oil in them, such as did electronic equipment, electrical transformers. So we received a letter to go through all of our schools and look for electric time clocks systems, which we did, and we don't have any of those. The second letter we received was for fluorescent light fixtures, the old style, they have a ballast inside, inside the ballast has a PCB oil. We've been diligent with replacing light fixtures throughout the whole district, so, through an energy program, so we were lucky that all of our lights were replaced, we replaced all the halight bulbs, if you remember, we had a lot of large places of assembly where, when you hit the light switch on, it's still dark, because they take 20 seconds for them to heat up and brighten. All those have been removed, all the light fixtures have been removed, so we were good then. The recent letter we received would have been in July 2010, from the federal government, that said, any large renovation projects in a school building, such as windows, door replacements, full renovations where you're tearing things out, you're required to test for hazardous materials, which have always been lead paint and asbestos-containing materials, and they added on the PCB and caulk.
Okay, so if I understand your answer correctly, roughly five years for the lights and two years for the caulk?
Correct.
Okay. So, just, the sense I'm getting here, in reading through all of these materials and getting all these reports since last April, is that we find something, the consultants report it to the EPA, the EPA tells them what they can and can't do, we come and try it, and then that either works a little bit or doesn't work, then we go back. In other words, I feel like we're kinda like the guinea pigs in this process, that the EPA is trying to figure it out too. And I just, I wanna point that out, that we're someone at the mercy of this process, which is fine, because I think ultimately it enables us to create a safe environment, but I think that we need to bring an expert and get another voice in here, because it's not, in my very limited amount of knowledge, the same as asbestos, where you have steps A through Z and you're done. This is kind of like an ongoing thing, we're feeling our way through it, we're trying to find it, and I think that people are uneasy because of that, so I think that, again, us hiring our own expert and maybe raising that level in terms of knowledge is gonna be, gonna be helpful, and to Mrs. Iacona's point, reduce the burden on our team so that they can get focused on educating our students. Thank you.
All right, I'm just gonna give a couple more minutes, and then we need to get to our next item, yep, Mr. Lew and then Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Carey, I had said a committee, I'm glad you agree with me, but I said a committee of parents, teachers, administrators, town officials and town citizens, or maybe town citizens and town officials, but I do believe that we need a wide and varied group of individuals who can try to look at this objectively. I also think we should try really hard to not make this a forum on politics, it's a really easy way to make a quick argument, just to say that the government's intruding, but you could also say that we, they require us to put exit signs in, and that does good. So I think we should really try to keep our focus to what it's, what we're talking about and not get into the politics.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I just wanted to, as an Osborne Hill parent, say thank you as well to Central Office for all of the work that they've done, the weekly emails have really helped a lot, and also just the.